Twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen to order. And if you would all stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Mayor Felkins?
Here.
At this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. If you would like to come forward this evening, if you would please state your first name, and then write down your name and your address for the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated. And also, if you could limit your time to three minutes or less, that would be appreciated as well.
Just a quick shout out to all our veterans of the United States for this upcoming Memorial Weekend, and a shout out to President Trump, President forty-five. A quick synopsis for the veterans from Korean War on up, and up to Vietnam, Iraq, Afghanistan, we appreciate your services. Vietnam, we lost sixty-five thousand men ages eighteen and up murdered, unfortunately. But we salute our veterans. We have our freedom and we're allowed to say our Pledge of Allegiance today. Very appreciative. So, just one last quick public comment. This is an article, February two thousand and eighteen, on government and how untrustworthy they are. And this is dealing with when Governor Milliken was in office in the seventies. And we have a veterinarian from Masaki County, Doc Clark. And he was the first one to come up with the contamination of PBB, which we were all lied to that it wasn't happening. And Dr. Clark had to send his samples out of state, because if the officials found out, they'd punish the gentleman. They'd punish Dr. Clark. And it said, it scared the heck out of me. The sheriff told me I had to keep a gun in the car, but he figured anybody who wanted to hurt him would take advantage of moments when he didn't have the gun. In the end, he was proven right. And all, there are important parts of the historic documents on file at the library at Central Michigan University.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting of May sixth, along with the closed session minutes from May sixth.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to public hearings, the first one for this evening. Marcus, would you like to step aside on that?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first hearing this evening is regarding the closeout of the Community Development Block Grant for the Cadillac Lofts Project. The Cadillac Lofts Project is the new mixed-use residential and commercial project occurring in downtown Cadillac between Cass and Chapin Streets off of Mitchell and Shelby Streets accordingly. Your packet includes a transmittal letter from our CDBG grant administrator, Sarah Christensen. The transmittal letter simply explains what the process is from this point moving forward, which is rather simple. We facilitate the public hearing, we note it accordingly, and then we work with our grant administrator and other officials in making sure that we have all of the documentation the way that it needs to be for closeout of the grant. Closeout of the grant is essential in order to apply for another grant in the future. I believe Sarah is here. Sarah, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me and giving me an introduction. I've been a certified grant administrator for over ten years, and I was hired by the city to assist with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's grant process and closeout for a Community Development Block Grant. It was in the amount of seven hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars. This was for the demolition and site preparation project that took place at two oh seven and two fifteen South Mitchell Street here in Cadillac. The grant funds were used for pre-demolition services, engineering, demolition, lead and asbestos abatement, and grant administration. Private funds in the amount of five thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars were used for the clock tower removal. The national objective supported by this project was to eliminate spot blight. No local funds were paid by the city of Cadillac, and no people were displaced as a result of this project.
Thank you.
If I may, members of council, just for reference, in the past, we've referred to this grant being over eight hundred thousand dollars. And the reason why it came in lower was because as the project went on, they didn't need to utilize all of the funding. So it was simply amended down accordingly.
Thank you.
So is the, is this the appropriate time to ask questions?
We should probably do the public comment first, and then we can. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. And this public comment period is, just relates to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussion.
Yeah, my question was just if all of the work that was intended for this project, is that all completed now? Or just all the payments within the grant taken care of? Because it seems like the project is, is sitting still right now?
Yes. It's sitting still because there are additional legislative items, including one that's on your agenda tonight, and a couple of more that are coming in June before they can begin to go vertical, as well as needing some additional okays from the state with outside funding that they're still seeking. Oh, Dean, I didn't even know you were here.
I'm here. I'm Dean DeCrager with the DK Design Group. We're the design-build contractor on the project. To answer your question, yes, all the work, except for relocating the power line by Consumers Energy, which we're waiting on consumers to get completed, is done. The grade that you see now on the corner down low is actually set at foundation level for the building. We didn't see any merit in backfilling it up and then digging it back down. So it is set and compacted. We are in the process, I'm working on right now, of setting up all my subcontracts. As soon as the owner finishes their bank financing, as well as closing out this grant, we'll start construction, and that's intended to start June eleventh. So we should start seeing some activity as long as the bank financing closes as well.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion, we don't need to take any further action on this particular hearing this evening. So thank you. I did. Okay, so that'll take us to our second public hearing for this evening.
The second public hearing this evening is with respect to the adoption of an ordinance amending the city zoning map. If the city council may recall, at the last meeting, we did hold, or we did have a presentation regarding this item. John Wallace, our Development Director, is here this evening. Should there be any further questions? And John, where is John? Can you step forward and just briefly introduce the topic with respect to the public hearing, the zoning?
Which one is this? We have two.
Munson.
Munson zoning.
With the Munson case, essentially what we have is when, a few months ago, you were doing a rezoning for the McCauley Auditorium block, inadvertently, two lots were left off of that rezoning. So when they went back to rezone those two lots, they were looking ahead to the other projects they had on the table, and that they owned the entire block, except for one lot, immediately to the east of the McCauley block. So they're rezoning all of the block to the east of the McCauley block, and the two lots that they missed on the first rezoning into the OS two, which gives them the most flexibility to move forward with a range of medical support services and accessory uses. So it's really the best zoning district that we have available to them to complete their master plan. And it also allows for that, allows for them to seek out the playground support facility that would take place in connection with the already-approved daycare center that went into the McCauley Center.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning map as presented.
Support. Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that'll take us to the third public hearing this evening, which is to consider the adoption of ordinance, amending the zoning regarding the accessory uses for the Munson property.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We couldn't get to this item until after the one you just approved was approved. This item is essentially a text amendment into our zoning code. It allows for an accessory use to occur if it's on a parcel contiguous to where the primary use is. So using Munson as the example, you have a facility on one parcel, then you have the supporting use on the parcel next door. So here, we have a daycare on one parcel, and then the playground on the contiguous parcel next door. Other examples of this that you might see, or we might see in the future, could be where you have a commercial use on one parcel within a supporting parking lot on the second parcel next door to it as well. And again, this presentation was given at your last meeting.
John, would you have anything further to add to that, or no?
No, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay, all right, thank you. So at this time, we'll open public comment as it relates to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending zoning ordinance regarding accessory uses.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, the next public hearing is to consider the adoption of ordinance amending the city zoning map. And this public hearing is as it relates to the New Hope Shelter.
John, do you want to do a quick intro on this, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
This rezoning is to accommodate the process to approve a, our first and only combined group and family shelter within the city limits. New Hope Shelter has taken a pathway to move away from a lot of separated facilities due to cost considerations and management considerations, and looking to put all of the group shelters and the family shelters together within one central facility. That's to improve management services, as well as save on costs. The site that they've selected is immediately to the east of the New County Jail. The land use that's in that area is largely in institutional uses such as churches, also medical support or medical office uses that are in the area. There are a few single-family homes. The master plan for that general area calls for additional offices, institutional uses, and higher-density residential uses. So from an intensity standpoint, the use fits in perfectly with what the master plan states for that area. And this rezoning would take it in from an R one to an RM two, and that zoning district would be the appropriate district to handle the combined group family shelter.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of this hearing. And again, this public comment relates to the New Hope Shelter.
My name's Mark Mogan, and I'm on the board at New Hope. And I, of course, support this and look forward to moving on to the next phase. Thank you all for all the things that you've done and helped us move this forward.
Mayor Felkins, councilmembers, directors? My name is Art Breithaupt. I've been working with New Hope off and on for the last four or five years, and watching this process fairly closely. I am just excited tonight to see that we've got to this point, and we're going to finally start developing a facility that will become state-of-the-art for this community, something that we've needed for a long time. Thank you for the support, and thank you for getting it done.
Thank you, Adonis Anderson, New Hope Board. Obviously, I'm in favor of this as well. We've been working on this for a number of years, trying to figure a way to consolidate and make things better for all concerned, and to be able to better manage. So we appreciate your support.
My name is Kelvin Rule. I'm on the board at the Church of the Nazarene there in Cadillac, where they're purchasing the property, and we're in support of the process.
I did see someone else.
Yeah, I'm very excited as well at the, what this new zoning will offer. We live quite close to where the women's shelter, and have been very much involved, knowing the difficulty in staffing. And this is just the ideal solution, and I strongly support the zoning ordinance.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Glenn Verberge, resident of Herring Township, actually. But, but I'm just, I think for the staffing issues and the things, just it looks like an ideal situation. We happen to be very involved with one person who was in this homeless category. It was a real difficult situation. We just got to see personally the problems, who are just hard in their luck, and they need this help, and this is the ideal solution for Cadillac, I think.
Thank you.
Not speaking yet. Forgot to.
My name is Will Markham. I'm pastor at the Revival Center Church, and this is more fun than playing softball. That's why I came to support it. But I'll go play softball after we're done.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and move to any additional discussion or a motion.
I would just like to say that since the very earliest days, the concept for New Hope Shelter, for a shelter, happened with three people in my living room when we saw somebody in, living in a cardboard box behind once was Kmart. And my husband was one of the first people that would staff it at night. When my children were little, we would go do Thanksgiving at the house that Munson provided. And to see it growing to this, it saddens me that the need continues. And I would much rather that that need not be there. But considering that it is a need, I'm so proud of this community, and of all of you who've put so much into this for our brothers and sisters who are a little down on their luck, to get a little leg up and, and move on, because it's helped a lot of people over the years, and we'll continue to do that. Can I make the resolution?
All right. I just wanted to add to that. So thank you for saying what you did, because I'm sitting here too, saying, I love this house full of these faith-based folks. That's great. I wish I could have heard from every one of you. And this is one of those projects that has endured in this community. I mean, it goes way back, quite a few years. And some of the folks that I remember hearing about from way back then are here tonight, and it's so nice to see you. And thank you all so much for putting all of those many, many hours and years of service into this project and making it really your mission. This is a really special community, and this is an example of how special it can be. And I love that the Nazarene Church is here too, and is supporting it in the way that you're supporting it. It just seems like a win-win. When I first heard about this project, I was like, whoa, what's going on here? But the more I think about it, the more, and the, how excited I see all of you being for this, and really looking at a really nice new facility, and new technology, and really bringing all the groups together, and having a lot more supervision, I guess, of the facility. It's just really taking it up a notch. And I think it's a good location, too. So, yeah, it'll be really exciting to see it all come to fruition. So thank you so much for your volunteer work.
And I would just like to share that, you know, in my time here on the council, the discussion of the shelters in our community that we've had in that period of time, it hasn't always been so positive. And I'd just like to share with all of you this evening that this topic is perhaps one of the most emotional things that we've had to deal with since I've been sitting on the council. And I am so happy that the community has never lost faith in the work that you are doing out there for our homeless people. And so I want to say thank you also. And I'm so proud that it, it came to fruition for you. Okay, with that, would someone like to make that motion? I know Ms. T., I would.
I would love to make this motion. I would make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance amending the city zoning map for the New Hope Shelter.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Go get 'em.
We'll keep moving forward. So our next public hearing this evening is to consider the adoption of ordinance to amend Section forty-two, two oh one, and forty-two, two oh two, three, of Chapter forty-two of the Cadillac City Code to increase water rates in the city of Cadillac in total ten
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Our finance director is making his way up. We have a brief slideshow that we like to present, that I think does a really good job in summarizing what we've already talked about during several other public meetings. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I have five slides worth of information, so I'm trying to move this, through this very briefly. Recognize a couple of things, though, as we talk about water and sewer rate increases. Number one, the challenge that comes from, from sitting in your seat, having to pass along proposed rate increases. And number two, the, the impact on, on people and their budget. And so we don't take the process lightly. We talk through the budget process of needing to balance the, the two sometimes competing principles of conservative conservatism, with also the aggressive need to continue to invest in our infrastructure. So that's the, that's the thing that we're trying to settle for ourselves, for council, and for members of the public. So as we move through here, just wanted to keep those couple of things in mind. The first slide talks about, just presents what our proposed rate adjustment is. And I really do want you to focus on, we're going to do this presentation once for both the water and sewer. We do have a blended financial system for both water and sewer rates. They both have to be passed with individual ordinances. But as we take a look at it, the blended increase to the average residential user in this city is four point seven two percent. So I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as we move through here, especially as you see how it compares to what we've done in the past. So the average monthly bill for a water and sewer user within the city, with this presentation, or this proposal, would go up between a dollar ninety and two dollars and eight cents per month. Now primarily because we're focusing on the water system this year, much of that water, much of that increase is going to be with the water rates, to the tune of about a dollar sixty-four per month, and then the rest would be attached to the sewer rate. And again, this is based on the average residential customer that, that uses between six and, and seven hundred cubic feet in a, in a month. So our justification would be the additional debt service that, that will be required as we invest an additional eight million dollars, both in relocating a system of three water... And then that project was, was built in 2010 through 12, in there, in that time period. But you can see what we've done with the rates through those periods. So, in 2010, 11 and 12, a little bit higher than what the, the average had been over the, the course of time as we prepared to take on that project. That was the first phase. That was about, about a three and a half million dollar project by the time you factored in all of the, the phases of the project. But then, four out of the next seven years, the rate increase was, was zero. And that just represented a couple of things, kind of some conservative approaches on the budget side with a couple of, of specific components of our revenue stream. And then, just the, the conservative manner of managing costs, where we're looking at all of those factors as we look to propose rate adjustments each year. And then we had a couple of threes and a couple of two and a halves. So, a great question came up today, and, and that was, well, what, what would have happened if we'd have done two and a halves beginning in 2013 all the way forward? If we had done that, we'd be a little bit higher than what the rates would be after this proposed increase. So, I think you can interpret that a couple of ways. Number one, it can be easier to, to do that incrementally over a, a course of, of time. But on the, the other hand, you know, we don't want to have the appearance that we're, we're hoarding money and, and jacking up rates when the, the immediate need for that cash is, is there. So, again, trying to balance those competing factors can be a challenge at times. But I think as you, especially as you look at the blended increase of 4.72%, it certainly is not zero, but it's, it's, it's a manageable and, I think, a prudent and defensible rate increase, especially as we talk about some of the other things that we, we've been able to do. One of the things that I wanted to draw your attention to is the amount of, of capital investment that we've been able to make over the last decade. This would be throughout the time where we also developed phase one of the wellfield relocation. So, we've been able to, to invest almost $4.9 million, and this is all cash investment since 2010 that we have put from the generation of user rates and charges directly back into the system. And so, I think that's a really important factor. We also, right now, currently have about five months of operating cash on hand. Best practices would be three to six months, as we talked about in the budget process. So, we're right in line with those best practices as well, in addition to being, being able to invest about half a million dollars every single year on average into the capital needs of the system. And so, things like that are what keep us from being here tonight, asking for a 25, 30% increase like we've, we've seen in, in some other places. And so, wanted to point that out as well. As part of our water asset management plan that we did about a year and a half ago, the firm Umba is what they were called then, they've now merged in their Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, did a rate study on our water system. Their, their analysis really is, is founded upon identifying a couple of things for us. Number one, you have to maintain adequate cash on hand for emergency and cash flow purposes. Number two, we're going to be taking on about $8 million in additional debt, which, which calculates out to about $367,000 in annual debt service that the system needs to provide for. We also need to continue to invest in other components of the system. So, that's where, you know, we've been, we've been investing $500,000 on average or so as we've moved through the last decade, and we need to continue to do that. Our only need isn't the wellfield. So, we need to maintain adequate reserves to be able to do that. And that study then identified with the proposed increase for tonight, the need for about a 5% in 2021, and then we can resume more of a inflationary type adjustments each year. And then, again, to, to consider, this blends well. They did a, just a cursory review of the sewer, and with the one and a half percent on sewer, we should still be adequate with, with resuming these inflationary adjustments over the next five years after this. Finally, I wanted to, to just highlight for you once again the results of the, the rate survey. So, Gosling Zubek is an engineering firm that, that somewhat frequently presents or compiles a, a rate study. The geographic area for the 2017 study was the eastern Upper Peninsula and the northern Lower Peninsula. And so, of those in the survey area that had water, 68 of them responded. Cadillac's rates are the 10th lowest of the 68 responding systems. The study identified the typical monthly water bill for those 68 responding systems, and again, average residential customer at about $28.66. Cadillac's average residential customer will pay a monthly bill of about $16.36. On the sewer side, Cadillac was 11th lowest of 62 responding systems. And so, the, the typical monthly sewer bill, I should say sewer on the bottom, as a part of that study, is $40.38 a month, and Cadillac's is $25.77 a month. So, just did some, some quick math. If we had applied last year's 3% increase and this year's proposed increases, on the water side, we would have stayed at 10th lowest out of the 68 systems. On the sewer side, we'd have moved from 11th to 12th lowest if no one else had done anything in the past two years. So, again, I think that, that just demonstrates, you know, your position on a study isn't a justification in and of itself, but as we look at evidence that our, the costs of our system are, are well within a range that, that is acceptable, I think, wanted to present you that, that data as well. That's all the slides and information that I, that I was going to present to you tonight. I'm going to return to my chair in case you need anything that's on my computer, but definitely happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Owen, the Baker Tilly analysis also reinforced the Gosling Zubek rate study in terms of where our rates are at, so.
That's correct. We were, when we were talking with them, they said their standard, where they would identify it as a medium cost system, on the water side is $30 to $50 a month, on the sewer side is $35 to $55 a month. So, you can see we're at, you know, 16 and 25. So, we're well within even their low-range category. Those aren't published numbers. Those are just kind of their, the numbers that they use to, to take an initial glance at, at rates.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the hearing.
Randy? I'd just like to recommend Owen on the job he's doing to hold the line on the costs and the increases. I know they're justifiable. They need the revenue, and he did an excellent job in his presentation. Thank you, Owen. Stop me if you heard this one about the clock tower. No. In the, Councilman King said the idea of raising rates caused great anguish for the council, says Councilmember Member King, who praised Roberts and said the city does want to invest in the infrastructure. I would like to say to the public, to the public, this is why we have these public hearings. Just a couple of things, and I see Councilman King's not here today. I wish council would take under consideration and to remember, when you raise the rates, you guys have run a lot of water and sewer to all these companies out here. You run them off to Cadillac Junction, and that come out of the utilities fund, and that costs the citizens of Cadillac, the taxpayers, millions of dollars. And I'll shorten this up real quick. Industries in Cadillac, there are a lot of polluters, and they cause a lot of stress on the wastewater treatment plant, on the whole complete process system, from the influent to the effluent. And that's why we have to maintain and keep that a state A plant, which it is, you know, and they're doing a good job. But the industries are polluting, and they're polluting our precious air, and it's upsetting the whole ecosystem. So, just a couple of quick things. I would like to know, over the last five years, how much overtime is being paid out to all the workers in the utilities department? There's been a bunch of money being paid out. Those costs need to be held, those lines need to be held. The other thing is, the supervisors of the plants, are they, are they licensed to run the plants? And who signs the state license? I think there's only one individual that can sign the license for permits for water and wastewater, and the supervisors at the plants aren't qualified to do that. So. And then, again, I did have an article, citizens of Cadillac should not see an increase in water and sewer rates, et cetera, et cetera.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion.
Marcus, would you clarify once again that the citizens of Cadillac did not pay for the, running the sewer out to the?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. The citizens of Cadillac, or the, the city of Cadillac, did not pay for the extension of utility infrastructure to any of the developments that were referenced. Those were done at the cost of the developer and then can, actually conveyed then to the city after built and checked to be up to our specifications.
I have one separate note, if you guys want to consider. The, in the material that Owen sent out, too, there was a separate schedule where we took the two seven and a halves and then returned to three and a halves for the next three or four years. And I just, you know, if you guys are, if you want to do that as opposed to a 10, you know, I, I like what Owen said, that, you know, a lot of people are uncomfortable with the incremental growth for the sake of growth in the rates. You know, you may present a more stable rate, and it's not so shocking, but then you're taking money whether you need it or not. So, I think that, you know, conservative approach after three years of zero, you know, leads to a 10% rate increase, and, you know, people do need to understand that. But, you know, in the separate breakdown that you gave, we ended up close to the same number, and it was seven and a half this year, seven and a half next year, and then it returned to three and a half. And I would propose that we accept that one instead, just for the sake of customer service and, and, you know, keeping people away from a 10% increase. I don't think that there was really any material change in the account, whether we were going to save or cost us any money in the long run, just a matter of preference. So, that would be my preference, although you could also pull the Band-Aid off at one time and take the 10, so.
I liked the, the Baker Tilly report and them putting it into perspective of percentage based on the amount, you know, and so, a 10% increase on a smaller amount isn't really as much as a 10% increase on a large amount. I'm, I'm just, I mean, that's a firm grasp of the obvious, but it, it really isn't that much. And I think Owen's slides helped demonstrate that, that it's going from, you know, high $1 and something up to 208 is the increase from that, to that $1.60 to 208 or $1.90, I can't remember now what it was. And the, you know, combining the water and the sewer into the 4.72%, I see the slides up there now, that helps me also. And I, I appreciate what you're asking, but I guess I have come to the realization that this ask is appropriate, and the studies will support that. It's hard to take a look at a 10% water increase, granted at face value, but if, when you consider everything else and, and the amount of work that we're doing and what the final product's going to be, I'm, I just think it's worth it, and the fact that we are already really relatively low in the field of, you know, municipalities with water systems, and I'll bet you anything, our water system is probably superior to at least 50% of them, if not more. We've got really an excellent water system and sewer system, and, you know, the citizens can be assured that we have great service and that our rates are not out of line at all. In fact, they're still low.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Since I've been making all the other motions, I might as well not stop now. I'll make a motion, however, I hate doing this, but I get it. You know, we have to pay for the good things that we have. It just, that's the way it is. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend sections 42-201 and 42-202, parentheses, three, of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to increase water rates in the city of Cadillac 10%.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Next public hearing is on the other rate.
Right, and we've already had the presentation because they were blended. So, this is the increase, the sewer, to increase the sewer rates by 1.5%. And at this point, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Again, I look at the, the proposed rate adjustments, but I don't see anything on the industry and what their, their share is and what their increase will be. Or am I missing something? Though I, I don't see industry, water, and sewer up there, unless I'm missing something there. But again, I want to emphasize.
I'll just interject.
Yes, Mayor.
It's, they get the same increase that everyone else does.
Okay, thank you. They should be taxed more stricter than the residents. They are the main polluters, CAD, copper, lead, zinc, nickel, chrome, et cetera, some real nasty discharges to our sewer system, to the water wastewater treatment plant. They should carry the burden. It's their, on their shoulders. That's why this is costing us money and why it costs so much to run a water treatment plant. If we didn't have industry, everything would be fine. But the industry should be paying more because they're doing, they are violating their permits, and they are one of the heaviest water users, and they're not being good stewards of our water and air, again, and our ecosystem. Some of the companies pump out that styrene at 99%. If you guys Google styrene, what some companies use, it's pretty nasty stuff, so. But the industry should take it on their shoulders for the increase instead of the citizens and taxpayers of Cadillac.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion. I would just like to state another obvious thing, and that our industry in the community of Cadillac is a huge economic engine for our city and the communities surrounding our city. And when we make increases like this and, and decisions about our rates, they share in that, just like we all do as taxpayers. And if we didn't have our industry and we don't support our industries like we do, we wouldn't have jobs and the ability to live in a beautiful place like Cadillac, Michigan.
The rates also include surcharges.
If we didn't have industry, everything would be fine. But the industry should be paying more because they're doing, they are violating their permits. And they are the one of the heaviest water users. And they're not being good stewards of our water and air again, and our ecosystem. Some of the companies pump out that styrene at 99%. Uh, if you guys Google styrene, what some companies use, it's pretty nasty stuff, so. But the industry should take it on their shoulders for the increase instead of the citizens and taxpayers of Cadillac.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion. I would just like to, um, state another obvious, um, thing and that our industry in the community of Cadillac is a, a huge economic engine for our city and the communities surrounding our city. And, um, when we make increases like this and, and decisions about, um, our rates, they share in that, just like we all do as taxpayers. And if we didn't have our industry and we don't support our industries like we do, we wouldn't have jobs and the ability to live in a beautiful place like Cadillac, Michigan.
The rates also include surcharges for, um, items. That have to come out of the system.
Okay. Ms. T.I.
I'll get one, okay. I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance to amend section 42 dash 374 of chapter 42 of the Cadillac City Code to increase sewer rates in the city Cadillac 1.5%.
Councilmember King, Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
And with that, that'll move us to our seventh and final public hearing for this evening.
Uh, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, traditionally, we don't provide, uh, much of a presentation for this one, given the robustness of the process leading up to this point where we're approving the general appropriations ordinance. Uh, however, there are a couple of slides that I've asked Owen to prepare this evening, all very brief, just highlighting, I think, a very important issue that I really want to drive home to, not, not just our own organization, but really to the public. Uh, Owen, can you pop those on the screen?
Working on it now.
Okay, thank you. Maybe just provide a couple of comments.
This is information that we introduced to council as part of the budget public hearing, uh, back in the middle of April. And it just really, to us, drew a picture of, of what represents some of our significant challenges here as a municipality. The, the charts, I guess mostly the, the pertinent information is just the, the total revenue that's presented, not necessarily the specific categories. Uh, but 2007, so essentially 14 fiscal years prior, uh, the one that started in 2006 to, to today, uh, we received, um, a $6.934 million in, in, uh, operating, uh, revenue. And for this year, uh, taking out, uh, the use of fund balance, we're receiving $6,961,100. So, over the course of 13 or 14 fiscal years, uh, we've, we've seen an increase of $26,000. Um, and so I, I think that's noteworthy to say that this is why when you see our, um, we've had, we've just had to be agile and be willing to, to adjust, to look at things. So we've, we've tried to implement some electronic payment systems, uh, which come at a cost, but I think it's very justified. It's a one-time investment to save, uh, regular year-over-year operating costs. Uh, we're down people. Our employment peaked, uh, back, oh, 15 or 20 years ago at 82 people. Um, we're at 74. Uh, the loss of eight people, uh, may not sound like a lot for us, is 10% of our workforce. And so we've had to just, uh, force people to do more. And, and we've tried to do that with investing in things that make them more efficient. Uh, we get a long time, uh, of, of useful life out of our, out of all of our assets, trucks, mowers, uh, heavy equipment. They got, the, the crews do a fantastic job of doing that. It's all part of that teamwork that it takes to, uh, make a, a revenue that's the same as a decade and a half ago. Um, stretch, I think, to a, to a point where we can all be very proud that our level of service, uh, at least we don't feel like it's gone down. And in, in fact, there's, uh, even increased opportunities. Uh, but the revenue challenges, go forward one slide, they're saying. Uh, here's, here's the numbers on it. So, um, I think they speak for themselves.
And so we just wanted to drill that point home again, that between 2007 and 19, there's been a $26,000 increase in revenues. And, you know, think of all of the, the different things that have been accomplished throughout that period of time. I think, you know, in a way, the city council needs to pat themselves on the back for continuing to support some of the creative ways and mechanisms that we've employed to get some really cool projects done in this city and continuing to be able to provide a full suite of services. And so I just thought that this was, this was great. And, you know, we've been able to, you know, to the best that we can certainly, um, retain, uh, a lot of our staff as well. And most staff changes have been caused due to retirements over, over those periods of time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
We'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to the General Appropriations Act for this fiscal year. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
It is pretty fabulous.
I know.
It's amazing when you consider everything that we've done in the last 10 years. And without hardly any additional revenue.
True.
And I think that's because of great leadership, by the way.
Thank you.
I think we would agree to that.
I agree. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2020.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, on to, uh, introduction of ordinances and resolutions.
On to fireworks.
Is that what everybody's here for? Is everybody sticking around for fireworks?
This is, uh, somewhat of a, uh, of a housekeeping, uh, change for the city. Um, we're here this evening to set the public hearing, uh, that would introduce an ordinance amending our code regarding fireworks. Uh, the reason why we are doing this is because the state of Michigan, um, has revised, uh, the statute governing the use of fireworks and regulations of fireworks. And by amending our code to do the same, will keep us in compliance with where the, um, uh, the state code is at. The changes are somewhat, um, de minimis. Uh, it does change how consumers can use, um, aerial, uh, fireworks only from the perspective of time of year. Uh, it was an effort by the legislature to clean it up. And we can get into a, a more lengthy, uh, discussion as to what those differences are. But we're simply, uh, adhering to the new state code and this will keep us, um, compliant with that.
No, just a comment.
Comment.
Yeah, to me, it looks like it's really giving more time for fireworks during certain holidays. I mean, I, it looks like they've taken some holidays off the list. But the week of the Fourth of July is like jam-packed with opportunity, folks. And when you live in a place like Cadillac, Michigan, and you live, you know, two blocks off the lake or three or five blocks off the lake, you hear them all the time during those times. It seems like we could adopt an ordinance that would not have, our, our bar shouldn't be set with what the state has set. It seems like it could be what's right for the community.
I'm not, I'm not certain if we could be more restrictive, though.
You're not?
You can't?
Doesn't the state allow the municipalities to regulate that more?
Some, uh, but there are areas in which you're preempted, so.
The last version of this code, if you may or may not recall, prevented us from establishing, uh, cutoff times because of the overall population size of the city's corporate boundary was too low. I think you had to have 50,000, uh, people or more in order to even be allowed to change, you know, your, your various cutoff time from what it was, so.
Can we, um?
We can still set the public hearing.
Right, and before the public hearing, my, my ask was going to be, can we understand, um, between now and then, what we do have the ability to include?
I think Mike's looking it up now, but we'll, we'll send out an email.
All right, thank you.
It's just really hard for some people and it's hard for animals.
And there's, there's another public comment section at the end of the meeting. If, if people are here to say something about fireworks, we'd definitely like to hear from them.
Absolutely.
So, and then I, yeah, okay, I, I do have one fire, fireworks question. This is, I mean, maybe I'll ask it again next time, but I see Anthony's here. But what, like, what's our actual, um, when you like, this is the most common complaint about people laying off fireworks and having them land on their property or land in the lake. And can you, like, I, I know it's not always enforced, but what's the actual penalty for something like that? Can I ask that question right now?
Can I ask it? Anthony, do you know the answer to that? You gotta go to a microphone, Anthony.
I didn't know. There is a penalty provision, um, when you are igniting fireworks, they have to be in your own property, not public lands. And fallout has to be confined to your property. I cannot recall if it's a misdemeanor or civil infraction charge. But I can, I'll research it and see what we've got.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the more common or specific complaints, other than the, the noise, which everybody's complaining about. But specifically, a couple of people have, have fired that one out there, so.
Yep. Okay, would someone like to make that motion then?
Okay. I'll make a motion.
It's your job.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on it. I gotta find it. To adopt the resolution to, let's see, yes. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the city code regarding fireworks and to set a public hearing for June 3rd, 2019.
Support. Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this next item, uh, which is in respect to, uh, setting up, uh, a public hearing for June 17th regarding the vacation of a portion of 10th Street and reserving a public utility easement in favor of the city of Cadillac, is something that came about, uh, several months ago in working with one of our local industries, uh, that being Cadillac Castings. Uh, there are approximately seven reasons, going back all the way to 1928, uh, that, uh, makes this make the perfect sense. It took, uh, quite some time to sort through all of the confusion. Essentially, there's a public road going through a, going through a building. So what we're looking at doing is cleaning up, uh, our books. Uh, this has gone through, uh, staff review, um, and especially the, the utilities department accordingly. Uh, and we are ready to set the public hearing. We'll have a map, um, that we can show you at that public hearing to sort of outline and identify the, the project area as well as, uh, some additional information to share. Otherwise, I can be happy to go through all seven of the, the points this evening, if you, if you want.
That's okay. Thank you.
Wait for the map.
Sounds good. Map's in the packet, but.
I saw them.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to read, but.
That's, that's very lengthy.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance vacating a portion of 10th Street and reserving a public utility easement in favor of the city of Cadillac, set a public hearing for June 17th, 2019.
Support. Member Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, as you may or may not recall, we already had a public hearing regarding the establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone for the Cadillac Lofts project. This next step, uh, in that venture is to now, uh, adopt the resolution designating, uh, the neighborhood enterprise zone, um, uh, between Cass and Mitchell as neighborhood enterprise zone number one. Uh, following that activity tonight, your next request is then going to be, by resolution, at a following meeting in June, to then consider the application for getting a neighborhood enterprise zone, uh, certificate. So, the reason why it perhaps seems so confusing or convoluted right now is because we first needed to create the zone for then somebody to apply to, to then get the, the certificate for it. So if you think about, um, as Owen and I had the conversation, and he really helped clarify it, so thank you, Owen. Um, if you think about, uh, the industrial facility tax abatements that the city council very regularly gives anytime, um, uh, an industry asks for one, uh, though the district, the industrial facility tax abatement districts al- already exist. We, those were created by the city many, many, many years ago. So all the city is doing then, um, is, is sending public hearings and going through the process to grant an exemption certificate. In this case, we have to do it all, and we're doing it all sort of at the same time, um, along parallel tracks to keep the project moving, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution designating the neighborhood enterprise zone, Cass Mitchell Neighborhood Enterprise Zone number one.
Support. Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding application for commercial facilities exemption certificate for the Cass Mitchell Commercial Redevelopment District number one and set a public hearing for June 3rd, 2019.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. Earlier this evening, one of the very first things that you did was have a, a closeout hearing for the community development block grant process. Uh, as a part of that, we are required to have a fair housing resolution and policy on the books. As you can see in your packet, uh, this policy references, um, uh, our ordinance that's already in place. And I believe it also references the Cadillac Housing Commission. Is that correct, Owen?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, this brings us into compliance with HUD regulations. And it's something that we have to do in order to close out the community development block grant process, so.
Make a motion to adopt the city of Cadillac Fair Housing Resolution and Policy.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have the, uh, minutes, uh, actually, we have a report from the Historic Districts Commission. And if you haven't had the opportunity to read through that, it was really interesting. Uh, the amount of, uh, applications and, and work that is going on in the historic district is really impressive, so.
I always appreciate those reports.
Yeah, yeah, it was really good. Uh, at this time, we'll open the floor for our final public comment. And you can comment about anything in this public comment, so.
My name is Jim Kounish. I'm a Clem Lake resident, and I just wanted to voice my concerns over the development at the Cadillac Junction. And basically, the, just the concerns on the effects of both the city and the townships. It's gonna be destroying trees, destroying wildlife habitat, drawing people out of the downtown district of the city, hurting downtown businesses. And I just want you to strongly consider the effects it's gonna have on the area.
Seeing no one else, we will move to, or we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything.
Do you want to mention, uh, ribbon cutting? April 29th, 4:30.
Go ahead, why don't you go ahead?
So, huh, April 29th, 4:30 at the market.
May 29th.
May 29th, sorry. May 29th, 4:30 at the market at Cadillac Commons will be the ribbon cutting event. Uh, this is, uh, very long overdue, but we are very excited, uh, to get that facility up, uh, and running. I believe the first, uh, activity is gonna be occurring just a day or two later. Uh, so it'll be, uh, it'll be nice to, to cut the ribbon and, and celebrate publicly.
Yes, so put that on your calendars.
The only good of the order that I have is I just want to say how much I appreciate the transparency of the numbers. Yeah, I think we do a really good job of, of telling the true story of where we're at financially, both in, you know, the general fund as well as the watering sewer funds. And I really appreciate that. appreciate that. And I, if there's any information that, you know, people don't have that they think that they would like, I think if you ask for it, you can get it. And so much of our information is on the website.
Okay, if there's nothing further, then we need a motion to go into closed session this evening.
Are we inviting anyone into closed session?
We are.
We are. The only add-on to the list is to also invite the Terry D. representatives and their legal counsel.
This is really long, could somebody else read this?
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Michigan Case Law 15.268 to consider periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, a public officer and employee at his written request. Yes, so that's the first one. And also to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement in the case involving Terry D. Clam Lake and Herring Township in the city of Cadillac, and to invite the city attorney and the representatives of Terry D.
Yep.
That'd be the second reason. Also, to meet for Heidi Hodick as next friend of John Doe, a miner versus city of Cadillac and Thomas Wade, and to invite Adam.
Abjepka.
Abjepka, yep. That will be the third one. And also for the city Cadillac versus Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority, and to invite Jeff Dietlin. And then I'll also need to invite Todd Kiwi, Human Resource Generalist, for the first motion. That should be all the invitations and the four reasons.
Support.
Are we going Ingalls?
No, we should, we don't have to go in that order, correct?
No.
Okay, sorry.
But I did invite everybody, and I did get all four different reasons, so.
Yes.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, we can go in that order.